Few days, my son is in the military and he's stationed in in England and so he came home for the first time in a couple of years and so I took a few days to run around Eastern Washington with him.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I stepped out of state over in England for a while. And he loved it.
Yeah, uh, hunters at Lake and Deep.
Okay.
I'm from England, so that's kind of.
You like the Russian accent.
Really wanted to.
You knew that?
I was.
Yeah, we immigrated when I was nine.
Yeah, it's cool.
Did you do that?
I'm glad you did that. I'm so glad.
Yeah.
I've been doing this just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everybody turning and driving. You ever do that?
Oh, delicious.
Hello, Kevin.
We're gonna have to get some cans with the string in there.
Nobody.
Yeah, I was in New York.
Evening, everyone. Um, it is six o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and get us started. I'm gonna call the city council study session two quarter. Will you please stand with me to say plecto allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands foundation under God indivisible with liberty and justice. I'll be going, Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilwoman Wallace D. Here. Councilwoman Diamond, President. Councilman Henderson.
Here.
Councilman Pop.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
President.
Councilwoman Labaka.
Here.
All present, we're gonna move into. Well, we have introduction of special guests, so I do want to acknowledge we have Becky here from Helping Hands Food Bank. And we also have both Catherine and Audrey, Audrey up here from Family Promise and YMCA. There we go. Tell me your name again.
Tom Pierce.
Tom Pierce. Okay, thank you, Tom. All right, and we do not have any new business, so we'll just jump right into the unfinished business, which is the request for proposal regarding House Bill fifteen ninety funding. These are the guiding principles for development. And leading this off, I don't know if it's gonna be Charlie or if it's gonna be Nikki. Charlie, okay.
Yeah, Charlie. How you doing?
I'm doing all right. Yeah, Council, my apologies for not being in person. Uh, just I've been out sick last day and a half, just working remotely. Try not to infect everybody. Uh, but I'm gonna go ahead and kick this off. So, uh, you know, we've, we've talked about this a, a time or two already, but uh, the topic of discussion is, um, what to potentially do with our fif- House Bill fifteen ninety funding. And, um, the focus is on some criteria, uh, related to a potential request for proposals that the city would, uh, issue at some point. Um, and so we have uh, basically some guiding principles that we put together to help put some bones to that RFP and then we'll write a lot of additional detail in, um, from there. Uh, the council had requested, uh, I guess, just quick backstory. We had some initial discussion about possibly allocating, uh, fifteen ninety funds to a project, uh, that was in Burlington earlier in the spring. Uh, council expressed a desire to hear from more po- hear more possibilities from the community and the agencies that serve Cedar Woolley and to potentially do something in Cedar Woolley, so we recommended doing an RFP, um, and that is the discussion that we're now engaged with. Um, we, uh, discussed with council at the time that that RFP discussion would occur in the fall and we brought that back in September and have been engaged with you all ever since. Um, so I wanted to really quickly just recap what we have in these draft guiding principles, just to kind of get us focused there and um, then Nikki's got some updated information, so it'd be good to hear from her. And then, uh, to go through each of the agencies, we'd love to hear your feedback on, on these guiding principles as well. Um, the first one is, is simply having a qualified project, qualifying project under House Bill fifteen nineties restrictions. Uh, the second item is if you're applying for capital funding, um, being clear about the number of units to be preserved or created with the funding and what average median income population those units will serve. There are restrictions related to AMI with, um, the units that would be created or preserved. Um, and then if the proposals for services, we've got some, some other requirements with basically just background on how many people would be served and anticipated outcomes. So that's the second bullet. The third one relates to, um, the potential construction uh, units, uh, with the up to sixty percent or actually minimum sixty percent of the funds must be spent on bricks and mortar construction. I'm gonna turn it over to Nikki in a minute to cover that, but I'm gonna go ahead and just, uh, go through the rest of the list and then I'll come back to that one. Um, the next one is demonstrating the ability to comply with all the reporting requirements. So this is not as much on the upfront legal requirements, but more that there are also reporting requirements with the state that the city has. And we are, um, my recommendations that we ask the agencies involved in delivering projects, uh, to take on a fair amount of that. Um, work for the city, uh, and I stand in here, we're, we're not planning to hire additional staff dedicated to housing to administer these funds. That said, if the council wanted to do that, that's a potential discussion we could have. The next one is contributing to satisfying one or several of the housing policy goals within the city's comprehensive plan. This is just a recommendation based upon the fact that we do have a, a comprehensive plan that has a housing element and uh, there are goals to be met and that will be updated shortly. And so, um, I always recommend tying to the comprehensive plan when you're looking at, uh, development of housing or preservation of housing. The next one is for capital projects. You know, we're looking for applicants that have some experience doing this work, so we'd like to see that they have the capacity to develop, own and operate, uh, or at least within their partnership that they might put together the proposed project. Um, and that, or there are a wide variety of eligible entities that could apply. Some of this is taken directly out of other RFPs uh, from other cities. I mean, included a bunch of those in the packet materials as well. Um, and we would certainly encourage partnerships because different agencies to specialize in doing different things as part of this type of project. And then lastly, uh, the council's been really clear that you'd like to see his money spent within the city of Cedar Woolley, so add a bullet point related to that. And with that said, I'd like to go back, uh, to the legal piece of this. Um, turn it over to Nikki, um, to cover kind of what restrictions apply to these funds, um, from the state.
So this bullet point is actually incorrect. Um, it originally should have said forty years or twenty-five years depending, um, for the reference to RCW forty-three, one eighty-five, A, oh, six, oh, that is the state's affordable housing, um, program requirement. In doing a lot of additional outreach, because this is an incredibly complicated, um, issue, because legislature did not put a cross-reference in this particular, um, code that identifies clearly which RCW applies for the re- uh, affordability retention period. Through a lot of outreach, the state has weighed in on this through Department of Commerce. Department of Commerce um, says that it is actually an affordable housing incentive program and that, in fact, the retention period falls under RCW thirty-six seventy, A, five forty, which is a fifty-year retention period, not the state twenty-five, forty-year retention period. This is consistent with what Mount Vernon is doing. If you look at Mount Vernon's, um, RFP on page thirty-nine of your packet says retention of affordability, minimum affordability retention of fifty years is required. It is also consistent with, um, what Bellevue is doing. Uh, if you looked at the Bellevue link that I sent out. Um, Spokane viewed it the same way that I did originally and had the forty years in there from RCW forty-three, one eighty-five, oh, six, oh. Um, but that bullet point again is incorrect. It, according to the state and Department of Commerce, it is fifty years affordability falling under RCW thirty-six seventy, A, five forty.
Can I ask a question? What does that mean in plain language? You have to have a, a, a structure that lasts fifty years or a program that lasts fifty years?
So the housing that you build with this money has to remain affordable for a fifty-year period. Meaning there's going to be a contract in place with, um, somebody. Um, because you don't want to be in the business of managing affordable housing, right? That's a lot of administrative lifting. There'll be a contract in place that, um, is in perpetuity or fifty years minimum, um, that requires that it be utilized for affordable housing. There's, you know, probably going to be a deed or something recorded against the deed um, that requires the structures to remain affordable for that period. Um, this is something that the federal government does all the time through its HUD programs. And so, uh, and also we do it at the state level. There's different groups like, you know, Family Promise does it on a smaller scale, but groups like Lehigh do these big contracts with municipalities that, um, are very long-term that provide for the sustainable affordable housing programs over the fifty-year requisite period.
May I ask a question? On this, the bill HB fifteen ninety, who passed that?
The legislature.
So it was voted on by the body down in Olympia?
Correct.
And then they wrote it out in such a format that they all agreed upon that format passed it, but then who said that the chamber of comrades can alter what they had?
Department, Department of Commerce.
The Department of Commerce.
The Department of Commerce is a state agency that is tasked with, um, interpreting these types of things when it comes to, um, their willingness to give out funding. And so, um, their perspective is that it is an affordable housing incentive program under this particular statute, which requires a fifty-year.
And they wrote that down involved, but they're also not elected by, but they also wrote that down to where HB fifteen ninety can only be used in accordance with such.
They have communicated that in writing.
In writing. And do we have that writing?
I can get it for you.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. The, um, just my interpretation I voiced this last time is it sounds like, um, the people we've elected to go down to Olympia to represent us went ahead and passed a bill and their intent was that that bill they all voted on would be in place and passed. So they passed it and then after it was passed, somebody else said, hmm, it's not strict enough or we don't like what's in it or maybe it needs to be more direct. Let's have somebody else modify or add additional, um, procedures or methods to it. And so then that took shape by people that weren't elected. So my concern is that based upon the law, we should be able to follow HB fifteen ninety as written and then the legislative wants to change it. They could. But if we're basing our interpretation off of it on other laws that are like-minded, um, we set ourselves up to be a lot more restrictive and not as liable. Is that correct?
I think that's certainly your opinion. I think, um, what Commerce is saying is that it is an affordable housing incentive program under this statute and that this, this does apply to, um, create that fifty-year restriction on affordability. All of the other housing incentive programs, funding sources do have these restrictions on them. And the reason is obviously that if you, um, say assigned some funding for, uh, building a house for an individual that qualifies under, um, fifteen ninety. Uh, what happens if there aren't these strings attached when he the next day decides to sell the house and take his five hundred thousand bucks to Vegas and go gamble it away? You, you have to have programs in place that ensure that the intended use of these public funds remain in use and in play and not, uh, squandered away in a manner that they are not intended to be used for.
When I read through fifteen ninety, it seemed like they left that responsibility to the municipalities. Um, to, to make that judgment call themselves and not be held to such standards. Otherwise, they would have just wrote that into the bill. But it's also collected from the community, so the community, the council voted to take on this task and therefore use it for the best means according to the bill that's laid out before us that we voted on. We didn't vote for the chamber of conferences interpretation. If they have a letter, there are non-elected body and I think the Supreme Court ruled that they don't actually have as much of a say to overcome the legislative body that passed legislation unless there's been an amendment to this bill.
There hasn't been an amendment to the bill. Again, um.
I don't know on that.
Yeah. Department of Commerce is the, is the state agency that holds a lot of funding for municipalities and, um, their position is that it, it does fall under the affordable housing incentive program.
Yeah, if you can get that letter, that'd be great. Are we required to by law to hold to that? Because what if it's an ADU or something that these guys are wanting to do and it can't meet that criteria and then it puts us right back into the big agencies that maybe like the Burlington proposal for half a million dollars for one unit. It's just way inflated, unnecessary. It's a nonprofit. You think it'd be cheaper, less taxes, that's for our miss. But they can actually do more with less and we're kind of taking away that flexibility. Do we have a legal requirement to follow the chamber of comments?
It's Department. So, um, I will tell you that the risk of not following Commerce's interpretation, which has the way to the state behind it, is that, um, you put funding at risk. So, you know, my job is just to tell you that this is the recommendation that I have is that you follow this particular RCW. Um, the, the Department of Commerce again has said this is, this is the rule that's going to apply here and if we don't comply, then you do put funding at risk because you get a lot of money from Commerce.
So future funding and other grants, if we don't comply with their needs. Not necessarily the funding that we are currently delegating with our own citizens' money. I mean, we're not collecting like a state tax. This is just local tax. We're collecting from our own citizens to help out people in our own community. But we're required to follow the state standard, which might not even be applicable to a small community like ours and agencies that have actually been very successful with what they have. So, yeah, it's a toss-up and I understand where you're coming from. I'd like to see that letter and know a little bit more of the options if we have a way to work with our local agencies who've proven successful with what they've got and not tie, not work to tie their hands. I don't even know if this would tie your hands. Obviously, I haven't talked to you guys about this or anything. It might be perfectly fine, um, which is great, but it does seem a little bit restrictive to follow that standard.
So I will say that thirty-six seventy, A is part of the Growth Management Act, which it does apply to you.
Yep.
Um, so there's no question that thirty-six seventy-eight, five forty does apply.
Yeah, if we're getting funds in that direction.
Well, no, just in general, thirty-six seventy-eight does apply. So if you have an affordable housing incentive program, then this does apply to you because you are subject to the Growth Management Act. And so what Commerce is saying is this funding is a part of an affordable housing incentive program that you would be operating and therefore, um, this particular provision comes into play because you are subject to the Growth Management Act without question.
Is there a stipulation regarding the mental behavioral health-related facilities along those same lines? Uh, they have to stay open for a certain amount of time?
So that was not something that, um, I had delved into. I was looking at the affordability component. Um, so that's a fabulous question. I can certainly look into it.
If we delegate money for rental assistance to prevent eviction, do we got a guarantee that those people are staying in their home for forty to fifty years? Or?
For the forty percent stuff.
For the forty percent. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know either. I mean, did the chamber or Department of Commerce?
I've read through this bill about twelve times and it couldn't be more vague.
Yes, I think they made it that way so that people could make that within their own, because everybody's different. Every community is different and our needs are gonna be different than Seattle's or Yakima's or whichever. You know? I like it to be as flexible as possible and then let the, uh, staff agencies that might apply for it decide on what's gonna be best to, to help the people that they help. Their experts of what they do.
So it sounds like we need to amend the guiding principles that the, to match with that.
Yeah, that.
RCW.
That should be fifty years, um, pursuant to our seventy thirty-six seventy-eight, five forty.
It would be my, my opinion just to stick with the HB fifteen ninety. To say followed requirements, terrible point four, keep it simple. And then, uh, that interpretation coming from the Department of Commerce could be, can be gathered and, and brought forward.
The other, um, potential risk is of course, um, because we've got state opinion on the matter and if we don't follow it, then there is a risk of potential audit concerns, right? So.
What did they call that opinion?
I have a question then for people who are visiting with us here. Projects that you have in mind, does that stop you from doing them? Does that modify severely what you'd be doing?
Not really. So homeless prevention, I almost rose my hand when you guys were talking about this. Because Commerce typically wants you to be, uh, a certain success rate, um, in order to continue getting funding and we meet those success rates and far exceed that. So that's not a concern of mine. It's not usually, uh, fifty years. They want to see people remain in their housing for up to eighteen to twenty-four months with a certain success rate. And we meet those state, local and national standards, so I'm not concerned about that.
That would be, that would be on the program side, right?
Yes.
The other thing I would add is I, I don't know that the homeless problem is gonna go away in forty, fifty years quite easily. And, um, we just went through an RFP process with the city of Mount Vernon and that, that they are four-year requirement, I recall. In, 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 during the RFP process. And for what we applied for, again, we sort of took the stance that as long as there's a homelessness problem, we're gonna be, someone's going to be providing the service. Whether we own that program and that building forty, fifty years from now, I can't say. Uh, but because there is gonna be that stipulation and it will, like your point, be a taps to the dean. That is gonna kind of go with it. Um, in a previous organization I was at, um, and I can't represent them, uh, now, but uh, they moved to a model where they were building units and the way that they maintained affordability was, uh, two things. They owned the land and leased the land. Uh, the, the owner, um, took ownership of the property or the improvement, uh, which put them in a position to be first right refusal to purchase improvement back if that household were to move on, um, as well as maintain affordability to that next one. So there, there are ways to think about, I believe, this long-term commitment, uh, if you're actually building units.
Are you referring more to like a CLT model, a, a land trust?
Like a land trust or a leasehold model, uh, is what we called it.
Um, when I was doing my research, I called, uh, um, Bellevue because they've been doing this, uh, for a long time and that's, I passed that on to you guys and I asked specifically about this question and, um, she said that, that sorry, I'm going against what we heard, but they said that it's up to the city council to decide what the limits are. And I said, so it doesn't have to be HUD fifty-year standard? She's like, no, the city council decides. Please verify that and I can give you her email.
Verify it?
Well, I can ask Sabrina.
Cause I don't know who you talk to.
I asked, uh, and then she's willing to have you, the lawyer for Bellevue talk to a- about that kind, the different projects, because they actually want to do this project as well. And so, um, that's why I spent about an hour on the phone with them. And I, I don't know, I mean, an ADU is gonna last fifty years. Um, but it's a house gonna last fifty years. Um, and so that's why I was concerned about the timeframe, but she said that it was up to city council, but that's one person that I talked to, but, and then I passed that information on, so.
What position did she hold?
I'm sorry?
What position did she hold?
Uh, she's the, um, grant, the fifteen ninety funding, um, for the contract side. So she does like contractors that are using like pub, not the nonprofit side, but she's on the public side and she manages the fifteen ninety grants. Um, so she was at the very beginning of, so she's part of that whole process of building the project.
Their website actually has the fifty-year requirement on it. I linked it in the email that I sent.
But, but the issue is that, uh, for fifty years, ADUs become problematic, right?
We were just discussing as the units that we have picked out, sounds like they have about a hundred year lifespan. So as long as Family Promise is still in operation and still in collaboration with the city, there's no reason why our model wouldn't still be doing that. And then if we were to, if something happens, then you put a clause in there. If we ever had to sell or close, then the funding or the housing goes back to the city or to another nonprofit of the city's choosing. Right? So it's a process that would have to be contracted in.
Or what you were discussing, right, correct. The, the other thing I would add, a- again, referencing to the experience we just went through at Mount Vernon. Um, there wasn't really much discussion about the timeframe. Where they appeared to take some liberties, at least compared to the, these kind of high-level guiding principles is beyond the sixty, forty split, what qualified in their mind to support homelessness, uh, and the housing crisis appeared to be a little bit more. It was the type of products, projects, I should say, that they applied. You know, uh, maybe a different lens than the straight rules behind the, the law.
Yeah, and I just had a meeting with Mount Vernon and got the go-ahead from, um, the mayor to start this project. What we're gonna do, one pilot project in Mount Vernon, hasn't been approved by the city council yet, but it, we are going to do one, um, project together. So just for your information on that.
On, uh, it sounds like in some cases, uh, if you're applying for the grant money from HB nine fifteen ninety and it's requiring a fifty years, such as Mount Vernon or forty-year, twenty-five-year, um, you can say, yeah, we're gonna meet that goal. Uh, but what if in fifteen years, you're not meeting that goal or there, you know, it's just, you know, in fifteen years, there's gonna be homelessness, so chances are somebody will be servicing somebody. Does that work as a, as a, uh, legal statement on a contract, on the binding contract for receiving those funds, like, you know?
I haven't seen the final contract, but during the RFP process, it was positioned as a, if, if we were to violate the grant terms, that the city could recoup the allowance. I don't know if it was positioned as a loan.
That's normal. And state funding, it's quite normal to have a twenty-five-year contract in place. I've never heard fifty years. I've typically heard twenty-five. Um, if you get funding from them, it has to stay affordable for twenty-five years.
But again, we, we post the position.
Uh, I think some housing programs, like if we were, we looked at some shelter rebuild funding and we have to be under, either under ownership or a twenty-five-year contract in order to receive funding from the state. So.
And, and I don't mean to be so casual about this, but again, we, we, we took this litmus test, so if this is not a problem in forty or fifty years, then this is a different conversation that we're having in forty, fifty years, or at least the next generation of, of what to do with those, those agreements and that housing and those services.
It's pretty standard for, um, state contracts to have a, you know, if you buy equipment, you have to have it for so long and, you know, there's an expectation of that.
Yeah, it's in the RCW forty-three dot one eighty-five, A that it would be for that from the Department of Commerce. They're, they're allocating state funds to organizations or guarantees for that. Um, my, my question was in our municipality, writing up this RFP, are we going to be tied in the hands of the people who do their job really well? Sounds like it's not the case. Um, we discussed even a ten-year, uh, sustainability. That seemed more reasonable to some of the council that they were, you know, looking at, but if it's not an issue, if it's like, yeah, fifty years, twenty-five years, whatever you guys put in there, um, I just didn't want us to go forward and say, yeah, here's an RFP. Then you guys come to apply and you're like, yeah, I just, I can't do that and the money goes default to the biggest agency who is the most well-known and tends to be the least efficient with their resources.
I'm not gonna speak for other nonprofits, but I think most nonprofits are the least restrictive that you can be, that still falls under the rules is the best, is like best for us, right? So we wouldn't like I say, oh, let's make it a hundred years. We wouldn't encourage that, but whatever the law fits. Plus, you know, you wouldn't want to make it more restrictive if you didn't have to.
I agree with that, though, that the least restrictive gives us the most.
I mean, definitely, always. I always say general operations is the best, um. And it's also what, as a council, what do you want to be tied to for fifty years, a hundred years? You know, that's part of your management, right? Um, so least restrictive for ten years is also probably better for you, you know, so you can rethink contracts, you know, those kind of changes happen on council too.
I can ask a question on the duration, not necessarily twenty-five, fifty or whatever. But maybe you already answered this. What if the nonprofit that is we're giving the money to suddenly goes out of business? That happens all the time.
Yeah, but there's rules to that. So when they close, they go to the nearest, like in, in when Anticordis Food Bank closed, they gave us all the assets. And so we continue to get assets as, as, you know, people leave them legacy donation and we end up getting it. Uh, Lyman did the same thing. When they closed, they spread out that funding throughout all the food banks. So it's really that there is a state, um, process for closing a nonprofit.
And then there's provisions that will be in the contract that allow for assignment, um, and allow the next nonprofit to take over the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, our, our use, our use shelter was operated by a different agency that no longer exists.
Oh, your Oasis Center?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think you could put clauses in there that also, as the council ties to the city, right? So the default nonprofit needs to be, have a percentage of residents that are serving this city, cause it came from our city funding.
One thing I was, uh after talking to Bellevue, I was, I was surprised that actually that you guys can take an admin fee off that to, to help, if you do have a city staff that's helping with I guess, writing the check or whatever, um there is a a clause in there for taking some admin fees, so it wouldn't hurt the cities to have someone, I don't know if you saw that in there, but that is important for every nonprofit, most likely to have some.
I had Team Challenge come to church last week, and I was talking to them, and they're from down south, really amazing agency, and they were curious about how do we get more funding, they haven't even reached out to their city councils or local governance for for any of the grants, they just started the process. And I cautioned them on it, I said, yeah, you get, you get some funding coming in, it sounds sweet at first, and then it becomes twenty, thirty percent of your revenue or more, and then the strings start coming in. And you have a hundred people you're caring for, and if you don't do this, thirty percent of your funding's gone. And do you put thirty percent on the street, or do you just comply, so comply, comply? And all of a sudden, your hands are tied, and my, my thought would be you know, to make it to where if we give funding, it's not with all these strings attached, love to get reports back, but on a trust. Uh and that's trust through experience and seeing your records and stuff like that, the people that come in and knowing that, hey, they they're gonna be responsible for it, we don't need a micromanage, that's something that I just thought about when I was, when they were talking to me.
Government grants are hard, the more government funding we take on, the more of my time goes to government funding instead of serving the people that we serve. So that is always a piece of the puzzle.
You have to be very careful with these contracts, ancient history, but over twenty years ago, I was part over a company that contracted with DVR, we were for-profit, and uh they called every uh contractor to DVR down to Olympia, and there's like thirty of us around the table, and they said, we are um bringing out your contract that we can cancel everything in twenty-four hours, that's what they did, they canceled every agency in the state. So that's my concern, is that, um and that was because DVR was twelve million dollars in the hole, no, no one knew why. Um so there there are risks when you're dealing with state agency, that funding source for uh low-income housing could vanish too. The the state just found out that they threw in a bunch of money for community colleges that they don't have. So, I just, I just want to tread carefully.
Kelly, um what, do you got a ballpark on what are collected balances so far? Of how much money we actually have in the pot, and then what's our take about every year?
So, we project by the end of uh twenty twenty-four that we will have collected about seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Um we've spent about, we've spent ninety-seven thousand dollars for that's for sketch accounting. Um and we have no current contracted commitments commitments for that fund, uh so on average, we take in about two sixty, two seventy. Depending on how, you know, that revenue is trending.
Sorry, can you say the twelve balance again, current balance?
Uh I don't have the exact current balance to date, but what we, what we estimate for the end of the year is seven uh seven hundred thousand six hundred.
So that buys you about one brand-new house.
Or one unit in a apartment.
You guys are all here, would you mind sharing some of your ideas of what you potentially would be using the funding for, or is that an inappropriate conversation to have at this meeting, because we have competing agencies?
I have, we have things to hand to you if you want to see.
We brought a whole portfolio of things. Why we're here is to discuss the RFP, and also, we wanted your input as far as if this is something that your projects, if you could meet the RFP that we're requesting here.
You know, I am sorry, we should.
You wanna introduce your guest. Yes, this is Raymond Faber from Faber Construction, he's a member of my board, and uh the chair of our Impact Capital Campaign.
Maybe I didn't explain myself at our last meeting, but I very much thought that today was going to be going over this, as well as hearing the ideas from these people that we've been waiting months to hear, and they're all here, and all we have to do is listen to what they might be proposing on using these funds, and I really feel it's important, I wanna hear it. If any, if I need to make a motion to hear it, I'll do so.
And Madam Mayor, I also thought we were asking the table to help write the RFP, not to approve the RFP. Like to put in what's gonna benefit them as agencies in our community, so that if we buy the sport agencies such as them, or like them, we have hands-on expertise, the subject matter experts are for us, and I thought that's why we like wanted to do this, as well as what you all had said. We we talked about that at the last meeting, extending this, we have plenty of time to discuss that thought.
Okay, um so, with the RFP, maybe we should work on that first. Instead of kind of being all over the board, because we're doing the RFP, we want to get that cleared up and straightened up, so that when we start encouraging people to put their applications in for the funding, that they know exactly what it is they need to do. Does that sound reasonable?
Have you guys, you have the RFP?
I was just gonna ask, if you want us to give input, is there extra copies for us someplace that I missed?
Yeah, they're gonna.
I did read it before I came, but it'd be nice to have.
You can have a computer if you want.
Mine too.
Oh, it's, I could also pull up my phone, probably.
I'll set my computer here, can you guys?
I got one here.
Do you need this?
Do you want this, Raymond?
Thank you.
So, I have a question. Section E of, so thirty-six seventy-eight, uh five forty, section E states, low-income housing units developed under an affordable housing incentive program shall be committed to continuing affordability for at least fifty years. So continuing affordability doesn't necessarily mean that if they build a structure, it absolutely must stand for fifty years without having repairs, or um that other things intervening along the way might not happen, it's just that that physical property location must remain low-income housing for fifty years, that's what you're committing to. Or you have to give it back to the city, give the funds back to the city.
There would be restrictions on the deed that restrict transferability, except in situations where it would be transferred to another affordable housing group.
So, I I'm just gonna make a couple examples, make sure I'm completely getting this. Let's say that Family Promise's model is gonna be to sell it as low-income house, I'm not saying that's what you're gonna do, I'm just examples here. And so that means that in the contract, when, once you've built it, you're getting ready to sell, it has to say that for the next fifty years, there is essentially a lien on this property, or it must be sold as low-income house, or within the low-income range for housing, right?
Yes, and that is consistent with um the community land trust model. Um there are CLTs that are operating statewide that have that model. Like they're built, um they're sold at a an affordable rate, and then they have restrictions on the resale at the same, like affordable rate.
Yeah, and so that clock keeps ticking until fifty years it's gone, and then whoever happens to be sitting at fifty years, it's still worth a decent amount of money, but they just got a windfall, but um but it's at least continued for fifty years. And let's say that Family Promise wants, or sorry, um uh the food bank, let's say that their model is, we're gonna put it on somebody's pre-existing property as a rental, so instead of it being for sale, it's gonna be rented out as low-income housing. Uh that means that there is what, a a lien on the property, the physical, the, let's say it's going in my backyard, they're gonna build that place, put it in the backyard, um then there is a fifty-year contract on my mortgage now, or on my property's ownership, is that how that works?
So I think that depends on whether or not it is in, it is a fixture that is attached to the real property, or whether it is, say like a park model, or something that is considered personal property, with a title and registration through ELO.
Okay, so.
But if it is, if it is an attached ADU, then the answer is yes.
Foundation, that, if there's a foundation that it's placed on, then it would go onto the property, as opposed to if it is a park model, then that would um then just apply to be physical park model, is that?
So, from my perspective, you you wouldn't necessarily have to cloud title if it wasn't affixed via a foundation, but you would still have to ensure the affordability for that fifty-year period. So however you worked it, it would still need that restriction.
Okay, well, you know, I'm expecting, I was just trying to decide, would that function under this uh, under this role for fifty years, if it is a park model and it's not set onto a permanent foundation, if it's not built in place, is that still a possibility? Do it that way, or is that restricted now, cause it might be a challenge to get one that's built well, and that it actually lasts fifty years, but I'm trying to understand if that then um you're taking control of a piece of the property, of the property owner? Or if you're just saying, we control what's sitting above the ground here, because that's what we've actually put money towards?
And I think that's something that I'll have to think a little bit more about, and get back to you. Um because it just now popped into my head that there's a distinction when you're talking about a mobile home, a title to a mobile home is different than title a house and land.
Yeah.
I can speak to that a little bit, I also happen to be a real estate appraiser, and so that, the park model that you're talking about is considered personal property. So if city funding went and bought your personal property, went and bought this park model, and you set it on somebody's land, the lien would be on the personal property, it would not encumber your land.
Unless it's on a foundation.
Then that's personal, that's not personal property, yeah, if it's a fix, it would be with the land, when it's personal property, it's a separate unit.
We build both park models and tiny homes. Um and it, it's very nuanced, cause it has nothing to do with the foundation technically, it's a oh man, I'm getting weeds and everything. I have called L and I and our state legislators over this, because it comes in a cyclical loop, because they call things, tiny homes are one thing, the IRC, and then a tiny home on wheels is considered a park model, but it's using the same term. Anyway, there's nothing to do really with the foundation, and it all has to do with the code that I build it under. How you get through the nuance, yes, park model is personal property, a tiny home is real property, um once it's affixed, we build them both um modularly at our facility, and both get trucked to site, both get put on the same, they look identical, they are identical. It's just the code they build it under, and what I call it. It's really tough, so, very complicated, I don't know how you're gonna get through that.
I'm a little scared, actually. I would say like, my concern would be on a, being a park model, just like any, anything, when a bank or any private lender would put a loan on it, they can roll away, um and disappear, and so my concern on the park models would be just that, um using um government taxpayers' dollars to go back into something that could in theory disappear, um with, you know, no intent of anybody here, right, but five, ten, fifteen, you know, you never know what could happen, and so I would, that's where I would go in dealing with that from a legal background that I've had.
Can we define affordable housing?
Like, when we're thinking about, you know, renting these out, like, say we build an ADU and it's permanent, so it's on a foundation, and what is affordable rent for that?
Yeah, so usually, most of our programs have to be below the thirty to fifty percent AMI.
What is that dollar figure?
I have, I have a chart, it it varies based on the size of the family, there are some set documents out there that we found when we were doing city funding before, that we're like, that's not quite right, but we were able to pull it out. Um I wanna say, I mean, it's enough that we had rental assistance under thirty percent AMI in the downtown forty-eight for some of our clients.
So, a basic family, cause the ADUs here in City Row, it can't be bigger than four people, so a family of four. They're roughly, twelve hundred dollars, fourteen hundred?
I I wanna say it's more like eighteen to two thousand for a family, something like that, yeah. For three, um. Yeah. Yeah, so say, uh a housing unit, so one of our units, what we would say is, we can't ever charge our max cap would be thirty percent AMI, but typically in our programs, in our transitional housing, we're like half of that. Um but, you know, models change over the years, so what you do is you just put a, a thirty percent AMI is that hits the mark for all state funding typically. Um and that's the extreme low barrier.
Yeah, my experience is, it's always based off of AMI, which doesn't set rates.
Right.
So you would still have to independently kind of determine if that's a requirement for the tenant, what is it you're gonna charge.
Right, so in a unit like ours, we don't plan on selling the units. What that stops from happening is, okay, so we, we let somebody come into the unit, and now they both got their jobs and they paid off all their debt, okay, when do we put a timeline of like, okay, it's time to move on? Cause you can afford the regular housing out there, this unit needs to stay open. That allows a program like ours to say, okay, you hit the cap mark, you have X amount of time to find permanent housing, um or, you know, move backward, or however that works, and that has always worked for us, so.
Should we go down the bullet list and just kind of um knock them out, chum out, I think that's bullet four, for the housing, right? But the bullet one, uh may have a qualifying project under house bill fifteen ninety restrictions, I mean, that sounds reasonable. So, uh number two is, if applying for capital funding, I know Charlie just read these. But if if applying for capital funding, state number of units preserved or created with the funding of what average median, many kind, AMI population, those units will serve, if those, if the proposal is for services, provide background on the number of people to be served and their anticipated outcome. That pretty?
That's pretty standard. Yeah, uh just, so anytime we do an application for any government funding, if you give us a dollar amount for homeless prevention, we're gonna turn around and we're gonna give you back the average cost to serve over the last couple of years, what we think projecting into the next couple of years, based on what information is out there, and our average cost to serve in that, within those numbers, families, children, individuals, all those kind of things.
I I would all add that we typically make public that, an impact report that goes into some of those direct metrics, like number of served, how did you serve them? So it's, 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 you know, they are organization, it's in the DNA.
And I did bring some dollar amounts that later on I can share with you on what that kind of looks like, based on a certain amount of, amount of families.
I think the next one, bullet three, was the one that I was most curious about, and um that was the one with the twenty-five-year requirement, you're saying it would be amended to twenty-five forty? It's fifty or amends to fifty? It would be, it would be amended to fifty, um that seems excessive to me, but you raised my, my views on that.
And I will get Commerce to send that to me for you, I have it in writing for a different client, and so I'll get one for you.
I can say that the areas where that gets tricky is um, in a place where we're trying to build, is do we own the land? And other projects you're looking at, do they own the land, or are they on a lease? Can they get a fifty-year lease for the land, I mean, those are the only really hiccups I can see with that kind of stuff, everything else is within the contract. Um all the things that we've already talked about, if, if the agency folds, how does that work, how does it go back to low income, those kind of things.
Well, risk makers do, I would assume, so if you have somebody who brings in an apartment building, and they want so much funding for that unit, and then you guys bring in a proposal, and you're saying so much unit, so much money for this unit, which one's gonna last longer, which one's gonna be more of a low risk for breaking down? And that, that was my concern, is that ones are going to obviously stand out as, as, even if they don't last, it's more secure than the others.
Well, and talking to Bellevue, there's fifty, you can use fifteen ninety funding for maintenance. So, but it has to be on a contract, like it has to be like a, so if you come back five years later and say, we wanna do some maintenance on some of these points. Contract, it, that was, cause they've already done that, they've already, since they've been doing. Cause they've already done that. They've already since they've been doing it for like four years, she said they've already done some where they had to go back and do some maintenance.
That makes perfect sense. If you're gonna say something has to last fifty years, you're gonna come back asking for money for a roof or.
It's a binding contract between the city and the agency to continue to move forward with. Development plans, you know, and allowing me to keep those houses open and livable for our community.
Well, we would reach a plateau, no doubt, because if we have six hundred thousand in there right now, we're taking two sixty in. It goes and then maybe ten units get put out. And the maintenance fee a house is a roof is seventeen thousand, right? And that's not including if you're contracting now prevailing or whatever, right? Um, so ten roofs at the hundred and seventy thousand. And eventually we're just using the taxpayer money to maintenance the houses that are there. We're not producing anything new in the community. So if we're held to a fifty year basis, we'll have to use that money to sustain what we started the program with. And by ten years, fifteen years, everything's going to sustain and we're not having anymore. I don't think we have. We don't have to, but whoever's got the.
You're asking the contractor to be.
Yeah, yeah.
The person that you're contracting to is what I think I heard you guys originally say. Is that you also want the person who's contracting this to be able to say that they can manage that.
Yeah.
Uh, and show that their longevity and being able to do this.
So keep up on plumbing, roofing, all that stuff. They not only have. It is fifty years, but we agree on. I don't know, myself, I'm not for it, but if you guys feel like that's. The plan.
From what I understand, we're being told that's the law. Is that true? That's the law?
Believe that.
Or is it interpretation?
Well, it's commerce telling you, which is the state telling you that this is what applies, so. I I will definitely get you that letter.
And you can tell how I feel about the government. Don't tell me what to do, the state has interpreted that this is what they're gonna do.
Well, you know, the E P A was putting down standards too, and the Supreme Court had to finally step in and say, you guys are not elected bodies. You don't have the right to set these standards out. You have a legislative bench that puts bills. And then those bills start to get modified and changed by non-elected bodies and warped into something that they weren't intended to because the people that voted on it. No longer have a say. I'm not saying that that's this case, but that's what we gotta be cautious.
Reading through the um the R F Ps, is there any questions or concerns that you have or is this a basic contract according to what you're reading here?
Seems pretty basic to me.
But we don't need to continue going through it line by line.
Raymond brought to, go ahead and tell them what you brought to my attention.
Well, yeah, I I just was mentioning, you know, we build our. These park malls, tiny homes, whatever you want, but we built them, like I don't know if you've all seen Wildwood Campground, I'll make walk them there. Very high end products, um, they'll last forever. They're built like a home, they're probably even better than a home. Um, got. Standing seam metal roofs on it, they'll last forever, like the what the the manufacturer will warrant it for. Probably fifty years, and that's them taking a risk, writing it down. So let alone just the time it will take afterwards. I'm not too. Too fussed on it. The only thing I was mentioning was. I'm not worried about the actual construction. I may be worried a bit more about the tenant, but I'd hate to.
Which is later on, and I already wrote my questions about that. So uh, it's more of a who is going to be in these units? And how is that going to be managed? Um, I mean, we've done a gauntlet of things, and I'm sure you've all seen a gauntlet of things happening in communities with housing projects. So I think that's. The bigger thing that is a council I would look at is what is the management plan that's going to make them last fifty years? Um, yeah. That's the point of this R F P process though, right? Yeah, so that. Exactly. That we can put out a request for proposals and and all of the contractors can come to us and say, this is our plan. And then council can say. Yes, we like that plan. We think this is a good program. Let's run with it. Yeah. So I don't know, I did see these in minimum eligibility, there talks about a management plan. I don't know if you have it in your bullet points. Um.
That is helpful when writing an R F P takes a lot of staff time to make sure it's right. So if you don't want something specific. We don't want this, because if that person goes, hey, there's this funding, I we fit. And they spend. I think the one for the county took us three weeks to write. To come to find out, you know, there was a, oh, we didn't, we we really didn't want new applicants. Well, thanks, you know, so being very clear of what you don't want is also helpful to me. Um, so I don't waste my time or other, you know, whoever is applying for them aren't wasting their time because it takes a lot of staff time. So just be really transparent and clear is very actually helpful. Um, to me.
It is not uncommon, not to make it more difficult for us, but you as a council, it is not uncommon for. In R F Ps like this for a request on like, what is your, how have you shown this in the community? How is it gonna serve Cedar Valley? What are your success? All those kinds of things. Those are all very common practice and applications.
I I also take a a pre meeting before the application and the time spent to do it to. Go over high level what we're thinking. To ensure that there is alignment. So that there isn't time wasted on cities are or agencies are. And I'm not talking about. You know, having to apply twice, but you know, here's like a one page overview of how we would use the dollars. And and sort of get an understanding if there's alignment and then take the necessary steps.
Some hunters will just do that through a general phone call, like when we do county grants, we have a contact, you can call them and be like, this is what we're thinking. Is that aligned? They'll tell us, hmm, it's gotta be like this, or it's not gonna work, and then we can kind of decide how we move forward.
So are you talking about coming into like a workshop or are you talking about?
If you have a, whoever's gonna, who's.
Are part of that conversation as a whole, because uh. Some sometimes we'll see something and we don't like it, and it'll get brought to us and it'll be the first time we see it.
My general experience has usually been a staff person or someone who's running the project.
Right.
Um, but if that's. You know, problematic.
I mean, it it is, it is what it is. I mean, it's a risk if if, you know. I mean, there there's a lot of other facilities out here in the county. That allow drugs in them and. I will, I will never vote for a for a organization that has low barriers. I will never vote to give taxpayer money to those. That's just me. I'm not talking for everybody else, but personally.
I I think it's council's discretion, not just talking about what experience we've done.
Right.
But.
Yeah, and sometimes what I see other people do as of recently when we're going for some bigger grants is when they get down to the final nitty gritty. They will call people in to ask for more information if it didn't align well. Um, yeah.
Yeah, it does look like according to the schedule, it looks like you are asking applicants for presentations. Is that?
But not right now.
No, but but through the process, like, so that's kind of. Yeah, because a lot of that gets flushed flushed out.
And that presentation should be before the council.
Even narrowing it down, so say fifty organizations apply for it. Um, and narrowing it down even to your top three or whatever is helpful. Probably just to, especially if there is a dollar figure amount. Um, I'm only gonna speak for us is um. If it's not gonna fund the project, because it's, I, we can only give you like. So say we all three apply and you're like, hey, let's do a favor and do a third, a third, a third. If it's not gonna actually do anything for anybody, I would rather. What, you know, like, for me, I would sacrifice because I would rather at least one project be funded. And not like, here's a third of the money that really doesn't help. So really thinking about, I mean, you do have a good. Amount of money to start with, but um for me, it's not helpful when people want to be fair. And they want to like spread out as much as they possibly can. It needs to fund a project.
That is hard. We have a bunch of seventy eight percent projects. And then you have ten projects, you gotta come up with another twenty four, twenty three percent for, uh, which is what we do, that's what.
I I would add that while that's true. Um, for us, funding from multiple sources is how we operate.
Yeah.
And and we do have those. And so if we got a third, that would go very, very far for us.
Yeah, well, maybe then in the R F P and a lot of them do this, like, show us other funding sources, like. Yeah. Me and the builder can get down to where it maybe costs. Forty thousand, um, if we get some of the in-kind stuff. And so like, what does it actually look like? What's a bigger project? What's the different sources that you have? Um, so with those sources, do you now have a full project? Um, that I would agree to that for sure.
We're leaving forty percent of this undiscussed though, because forty percent of our funds are for services and not brick and mortar. So I mean, I. I don't see any of you guys being able to build an apartment building for seven hundred thousand dollars. Right?
That's our goal. We we did the research on this uh for many years and had talked about, we've had conversations together on how we could do it in partnership. And right now, the way that funding is and energy codes and we're all for all that, right? Um, great apartment buildings are being built that our families are in where they're not. You can't hear any noise, you don't even know that there's neighbors next door. And that's all great, but for an organization of our size in our city. We kind of sit on the outskirts of some funding that's really hard for us to look at apartment buildings. That's why we are looking at smaller cottages that can be purchased one unit at a time. Um, until we build to our max, which also makes it a little bit more cost per unit. Um, by square footage, but it makes it more feasible to get a funder to pay seventy five percent of this one house or. A donor to, you know, get their name on half a house or something like that, if that makes sense.
Just to follow up on that, it was probably months ago in the Seattle Times, they're. I think it's Pierce County is looking at a homeless uh. Project in Texas, which has been wildly successful. And what has made it successful to follow up on Councilman Henderson talking is. Uh, is that the people take tremendous uh ownership with their property. There there's flowers in the yards, people know each other, and it's 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 a large project, but it's been super successful. And you know, it's, I think that part of it is bringing in people and encouraging them to. Have that pride of ownership. I think that's really important.
Yeah.
I I think it's true. I I think it's true even here in sketching.
You guys have your A M I chart in here, just so you know.
Oh.
We we typically go off of, it's pretty close to the state. Yeah, it's not too, it doesn't look like it's too far off.
So they included the R F Ps for three other places as representation, which looked pretty convoluted, pretty. You forget much figures.
I got to the end.
Cities, so it's not unless there's gonna be a lot of builders, it's gonna be. The amount of dollars and what you guys are looking for is gonna be hard for a builder to compete with. I think you're looking at nonprofit funding here.
We're about ten percent of the county in populace, and we got about ten percent of the funding through the through the H P fifteen ninety, so. It'd be very interesting to see what what we do with that ten percent, how that affects this community and if that could even be a mirror. To others. So I think establishing this R F P or establishing the criteria to go forward. And then, you know, going on on a collaborative effort forward and seeing how that how that affects our community, it's gonna be. An example for the rest of the county, for sure.
So for for consideration, and it probably doesn't help any of us here. But I know some municipalities are looking at the fact that this funding is gonna come in annual. And doing an estimation on, uh, what does that equal to in ten years? And can we leverage a ten year uh revenue stream to do something very large? So I just throw that out for consideration. If that's, if that was something you were really looking to do with something big and and. Largely impactful, I I do know some municipalities are booked at these dollars and that.
I heard a project where, um, this is in Mount Vernon where they're talking to builders and um talking about like. If you're gonna build an apartment complex, I think I'm pointing in the right direction, could you use some of the funding to make? Five of them affordable, right? And so the question was that, and the builder was like. It gets gonna cost about, I think they said two hundred thousand dollars to make them more affordable, and that felt like a nice. Kind of. Well, if five apartments now, you know, they're they're building them, but. The money is going to lower the cost of building it so that those five apartments can be cheaper down the line. And I mentioned that to um Rob and John Taniki, and they're like, that's curious. So you wouldn't have to pay the full amount for one, you're just helping lower the cost of building a few, and then they go into that fifty year. Affordable place. And then some of the during the housing forum that I went to, you know, there's that scare about like, oh, we don't want to put. All of the. Um. People who need affordable housing in one location and that still kind of spreads that. Density out a little, they they're living in those nice apartments or in nice neighborhoods. And it's just affordable, right?
They've done that up in Bellingham.
Yeah.
It's been quite successful. At the housing forum, I recall it being brought up, um, and I thought that that was a. Very reasonable. Request or opportunity for future conversation in that, in that.
Yeah.
You know, you put. Obviously, the builder has to be on board with it.
Yeah.
Um, and the management company in that contract between the two, the nonprofit and the. Um, management company as well, um, but having a couple of units in. An apartment or something be developed and and kind of set aside for that, so.
For the R F R R F P, they were like, that's for nonprofits. I'm like, no, it's actually like in Bellevue, they get ten million dollars, so they're working with large. You know, entities and right now, I think a builder can. You know, come in and, you know, if they have a great project, they have a great project. And so I don't know if. And part of that is making it really clear that it's for. Anybody interested in doing affordable housing and whatever that means. Um. So.
Yeah, and I think it comes down to again, like you asked, the definition of affordable housing and where that falls. Figure that nobody like has has provided a very like. Number that this is where it's where it's at, where it would be estimated, because that's always going to change.
I think that's maybe where the council could take some liberties is to define it. Is it is the threshold sixty percent? Is the threshold thirty percent? Is it eighty percent? So in terms of what qualifies, there there may be some.
Well, and do we have any additional information from our comprehensive plan in regards to where that additional housing? Needs to be or is is being discussed and where those gaps would need to be?
Yeah, they're in the best, but we're not, we're not there yet.
Charlie, did you have something you were saying?
I did, thank you. Yeah, just a couple of points of order. One, uh, the requirement for bricks and mortar. Uh, fifteen ninety investment is up to sixty percent of A M I, so the A M I number will change, but that's the requirements in the statute. And. The other piece of this is. Up to forty percent of your fifteen ninety funds could be spent on services. Which means if you wanted to spend a hundred percent of your fifteen ninety funds on bricks and mortar, you could do that.
I would personally prefer to say lower number than sixty percent A M I. Um, I don't know how you all feel on specific number.
What's A M I?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, I can, well, I would. I can tell you that ninety five percent of the clients serving family promise are below thirty percent A M I. There's a five percent that fall into the thirty to fifty percent, but nobody ever goes over fifty percent. That is your average.
So what is our A M I here?
I think it's, I think it's different per family structure, like how many people are in a family, we can pull it real quick. I I wanna make one quick note, if I could, a little bit on just kind of where you should maybe set A M I and then along the lines of. Um. Having. Built um. Building homes that you sell for profit and then you try to use some of those funds to help lower the costs of an affordable house. How may work for apartments? Um, better than. Um, houses that are for sale. Um, we work a lot with Colson Community Line Trust at the Bellingham. Um, and. I hate being the guy that makes somebody else pay more for a house. To fund somebody else. Everybody's struggling. So that's kind of one comment, so. Um, and then also with Colson, they're also looking at trying to get. Or. Figuring out how we can get to actually a hundred percent A M I. Because houses are expensive even for everybody, like, so, um, I I. I don't know.
I I think the last number I saw for A M I in sketch, kind of was like a hundred and two thousand for a family of four. So now the percentages aren't. Linear, they're they're rounded up.
I'd be, again, I'd be a little careful about being too restrictive because sometimes it's just. You know, five. You know, five dollars that puts that person in that, you know, place, cause we lowered it.
What percentage for AMI did you want here?
Thirty and what's the fifty?
So uh, for like a household of three, the thirty percent AMI, um, and I think this might have been twenty twenty-two. Yes, twenty twenty-two, which is what we base our rental assistance that we use for Cidro Woolly on. Is uh, twenty-three thousand for a family of three. Rental assistance that we currently get from the city of Cidro Woolly is based on sixty percent AMI. Um, and so that's people who have graduated our programming and have moved out. Uh, a family of three is forty-six thousand five hundred in twenty twenty-two. So those numbers, you're gonna see that if I were to pull new numbers, those hopefully will have caught up a little bit. The issue with this in twenty twenty-two is these were based on, I think, if I remember correctly, something like twenty eighteen rental rates. Because there was a gap in numbers, so there's kind of some discrepancies that are happening from housing authorities and commerce and.
So what you're saying is they can make, they make twenty-three thousand dollars a year. Is that what that means?
Yes.
And then ideally, they're paying thirty percent of their house, to their households, like for rent.
Yes, so thirty percent of their AMI would go to rent.
So then you divide that by twelve, it's about five hundred and seventy-five dollars. That they would be, that would be that thirty per, that magical, no more than thirty.
So, and that is considered extreme poverty levels. So a lot of, a lot of them will be based on fifty to sixty, which is more like, these are people that are um, kind of what you're talking about. Not in low barrier anymore. They've graduated out of that, they're on the road to success. And then you start to look at the fifty to sixty percent AMI, which is where we sit with the city right now. And so a family of three would be forty-six thousand five hundred. If you wanna do that math.
And then, and it goes up and down depending on the size of the household.
Yeah, but, but. Yes, that's just the family of three. Again, working with um, commerce and what has been set forth and what we have been told, all of the cities have been told. The final for twenty forty-five housing allocations in Skagit County, Cidro Woolly. Um, so this is by twenty forty-five, what they are looking at procedurally is eight hundred and forty-eight um, housing units. Um, with a thirty percent or less. Um, the, we haven't voted on this yet, but they're calling it the final. They'll bring it back. It's not like we have a say so in this. The thirty-one to fifty percent AMI in Cidro Woolly uh, by twenty forty-five is five hundred and forty-four units. The fifty to eighty percent AMI is three hundred and eighty units. This is all by twenty forty-five. How much was that one, sorry? The uh, thirty-one or fifty-one to eighty percent. I'm reading off of my phone, it's teeny. Um, three hundred, three hundred and eighty. Um, the eighty-one to a hundred percent AMI is two hundred and three. The hundred and one to a hundred and twenty AMI is um, a hundred and eighty. And above a hundred and twenty AMI, we're looking at four hundred and ninety-one. So that's what's being set forth to us from the state regarding um, allocations for housing. That's what we're gonna be looking at.
Is that gonna be the comprehensive plan bandwidth that we're looking at?
Yeah, I was just uh, thinking of that. You know, what I could do is forward to you the information that our consultant team has put together on this. Have that information presented. Last week at our, at our housing floor, at the second floor.
So what's the total balance for all those different numbers in the income bands? What's the total number of units that were being required to build by twenty forty-five? Or show capacity to build by twenty forty-five?
Um, for us, it's going to be, according to this, this is the Growth Management Act. Um, two thousand six hundred and forty-six.
So that second, that second number was eleven hundred dollars a month. So you're, we were at thirty percent and then we were at fifty, correct? Or was it?
Sixty.
So you're at thirty percent, you're for a family of three, it's five seventy-five. And at sixty percent, you're looking at eleven sixty-two. Is what they ideally, and they're paying thirty percent of their income is, that's what for their housing, that's the number you're looking at.
So, and typically in our transitional housing units, like in a multifamily unit, we charge four hundred to six hundred dollars. And then a unit like this where they're in their own house, it's typically, I would say in a unit our size, what we're hoping for is about a thousand. Uh, a question though, um, going back about this thirty percent, can you include shelter rooms in that?
Um, I do not see that here, but that's a good question I can ask.
I, I would, I would look at that because in our whole plan, it also increases shelter spaces. In Cidro Woolly, procedurally residents and.
Supposed to have like forty-eight shelters spot.
Yeah, and we're looking at two-story potentially, so that's farther down the road, not what, but it is in our plan for our impact campaign within the next five years. So you might think about that as well.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, I'm guessing that highly likely it might be just because they are, I know that they were also looking at, uh, I forget. Um, now, what it was, I gave it in one of the State of the Union address, or State of the City addresses where we talked about um. How many homes had to be built? It was like, in the state of Washington, it was like a million or more. And a good percentage of them had to be transitional housing.
Yeah.
After seeing those numbers now, I'm not so sure. I wanna restrict it from under sixty percent because.
I think sixty percent would be fine, keep it at the top. The other thing is that forty percent is the rental assistance, I think that would be very, very encouraged to use. And maybe job trainings in that service, but that's going to be eviction prevention. And we really need to keep that, I think, in there and not put that towards brick and mortar for people that have already been evicted.
I would agree. Correct, when you have, it's, it's a good, there's so much, you can do so much with that amount of money. In Cidro Woolly residents that will reduce the numbers for the high demand of housing, if you can just keep them in their units.
We had you here before, Andrea, and we asked you about eviction prevention and if your organization. And organizations like you have the uh administrative capacity to handle.
Yeah, I did bring some numbers today, if you're interested in hearing those.
I'm always interested.
Okay, um, over since two thousand and seventeen, we've served, served three hundred and eighty-five families in Skagit County. Um, with homeless prevention. Um, let's see, and then eighty-nine of those families were Cidro Woolly residents. In twenty twenty-three, uh, we served a hundred and fifty families, seventeen families of those were Cidro Woolly residents. Totalling thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, now, in our housing, as we started to partner with Cidro Woolly with housing and rental assistance. You can see that in our housing numbers, we went up to thirty-four percent housing were Cidro Woolly residents. So if we partnered in funding with the city, we would also see that same trend go up in Cidro Woolly residents. Our hands are tied sometimes by some of the funding we currently have to serve different populated, we've gotten Mount Vernon funding. So a chunk of our funding goes over there many years. So that's why those numbers kind of fluctuate. Uh, but yes, we're hoping by the end of next year to have a second full-time uh homeless prevention counselor on site.
And we have um, diversion for funding from the county for the first time this year. Um, there, they've asked us to use it from kind of East County, meaning Cidro Woolly East. Um, but I think the first two people that used it, one was a veteran in Anacortes and one was um. One's here in Cidro Woolly, a homeless family, so um. So yeah, it's, there's another, I mean, even Community Action has um, diversion funding. Uh, I don't know if they spend it here, is that, do they kind of serve that part of the county and you guys? Cause it was you guys, us and Community Action that got that diversion funding from the county. Um, I'm not sure what they do with their piece. I, I know you guys do great things with your piece, so.
Yeah, our piece is for all of Skagit County, um, and then we have gotten some funds from Mount Vernon that sticks to Mount Vernon. We don't have any right now at this moment. Um, in addition, we have some national funding that has allowed us to, say we have somebody that moves from our county to go be with family someplace else. We can move them out of our county to be with family, or if they go to school or something, we can support them while they're going to college out of county. And then bring them back, so that they can then again provide, you know, the services or, you know, be a part of our county. If they were originally tied here.
And you have ways to, to ensure that like eviction prevention programs aren't taken advantage of. I've seen, I've seen people get a bunch of groceries with the A V D card and then turn around and go right to the lottery machine and get a bunch of scratch tickets.
Yeah, so family promise, actually, when the homeless prevention uh, shelter diversion model was being thought about kind of nationally. We were a part of that pilot program with our national affiliate and then jumped on with the state pilot here in Washington. And then became the pilot for Skagit County. So we've worked on a lot of these systems. It's always, we always have to check incomes. We work with landlords before we'll pay anything out. We have to have W nines. There's quite a bit of things. And we pay it directly to the landlord who has already given us all the information. Um, and if they're not willing to work with that client, then because of drug use or whatever that may be. Now, we do still try to, with some of our funding, we have worked with them to get them in treatment and someplace stable.
I have a question about that on, on treatment. Is there, just to make sure the, wherever the, you are, it's livable for other folks. Um, is that part of the eviction thing? If somebody won't go into treatment or somebody is uh. Um, refusing to go in treatment on mental health. And, and by the way, there was an enormously important news story on mental health. Bristol Myers received FDA funding for the first schizophrenia, new schizophrenia medicine in thirty years. That doesn't have a lot of those side effects, you know, weight loss.
Yeah.
And uh, so I just, you know, if somebody won't. I've, I've had a lot of experience, unfortunately, in my family with drug addiction, alcoholism. And if somebody won't do it, you can't make them do it. You just have to tell them to leave or, or what. So do you have that capacity in the eviction stuff?
We won't serve them with funding if they're unwilling to make the change. They have to prove sustainability in that unit. Um, we do give them options at point to get on our waitlist for shelter and we offer to help them um, through processes. Get contact with other services, but if they don't want the help, we can't force them. Um, yeah, a lot of times because we build that relationship with clients on our waitlist before they're ever in our services. They will turn around and when they lose their unit, they will call us and we do our best to serve them on our waitlist into treatments and facilities.
So while we're on the subject of um, the service side of this, if we could define exactly what it means. Uh, operation. Delivery, what, what does delivery mean? Like taking those services to those people?
It's on the second, it's on the second page and it's the remainder of funds collected up to forty percent. These are the funds that's underneath there.
Like on page five.
Would you wanna go up to page five for?
Yeah, there it is, on the, on your left.
How we would define it is to deliver the program services.
Okay.
So at the rec center, you know, we, it's, it's our jumping off point for outreach to, to homeless youth. As well as they use that come to the rec center. Uh, so it's those staff, it's the program services, it's the admin piece of it.
You guys are on the rec center employee, right? Uh, now I recognize you, you were in here about.
Yeah, yeah, and you helped us with.
Okay, how's that going by the way?
Great, great. We've got uh, uh. The funding that we requested from the state has been approved by the committee. Goes to the governor and the legislature during budget process later this year. Uh, and then we have two active requests to help with the rebuild, uh, remodeling work that we wanna do there. Um, so we, we, if that comes true, we'll have about a hundred and seventy-three twenty.
It's our excellent, wonderful program.
I guess you kids are going through it.
So.
Really are, and we, we provided, I think, seventy-three hundred meals last year, I guess.
That's fantastic. That, that's really appreciated what you guys are doing down there. Um, so with the rest of the definition, mental and behavioral health. So mental health, can we define that and how it differs from behavioral health? Mental health is, mental illness, behavioral health is what exactly?
Uh, when we talk about behavioral health, it's typically um, be. When we deal with chronic families, there is a behavioral component that sometimes needs to be addressed from people who have lived in chronic lifestyles. And when we're talking about how do we, how do we enact change generationally? Is how we work on those behaviors. And in some instances, that might be not something we do, cause it might be behavior modification services. Um, integrated with different kinds of trauma counseling. Um, yeah, it can, the list can go on. It's really dependent on each person and what they're going through. Mental health, substance abuse, they all kind of all compiled into one kind of chronic load, I guess, is the best way to say it.
For us, because of who we're serving, it's really life skills, how to cook, you know, access to job training. How to do your laundry, um, get your, your, I forget what it's called, but the, the state cooking license.
Basic hygiene stuff.
Yeah, so that type of stuff, it's really specific. If there's a, a mental health problem, um, we, we, we put ourselves in a position of.
So when you asked that question, I was actually looking at Nikki, cause I was looking, thinking of the legal definition of that, what they say fall within. Would you consider the legal guidelines for these?
Yeah, I, I actually consider this definition to be fairly broad and where you have some flexibility. Um, so I, I think everything they said would fall under this.
If, if it's helpful for everybody as well, the, the statute is convoluted to read. So I created this table to try to better understand it. So, but tho- those words are directly out of House Bill fifteen ninety.
Yeah, so it basically reads from like, in most, in most state grants too, it's like as simple as like, how do you get out of bed and make your bed in the morning? To how do you do behavior modifications to change a lifetime worth of trauma? Um, yeah.
We'll, we'll bring in partners to the center.
Yeah.
To, you know, be accessible.
Job Corps, you guys partner with Job Corps?
Um, it's on the table, but more for the Y, the Y facility in Mount Vernon. Um, but I'm thinking like, uh, there's sort of abuse going on, legal services. Um, uh. Health services, so for instance, uh, parenthood has come in. Uh, and then if there's any at-risk vulnerable groups, I'll try to find the right agencies for them to serve them.
Our interns currently come from Job Corps.
So treatment programs and services, so we kind of covered that. Or housing-related services, which we've already.
Yeah, it's interesting, when, when we, when we talk about the rec center and the outreach that we're doing. It kind of fits both camps because there is a remodel that, that needs to occur. And that's what we're actively fundraising for. Um, but program services, right, that's, that's an ongoing.
So Charlie, for the RFP on the matrix that's used in here, how big would, would it be? Would it be pretty much what we're looking at right here? Would it be dropped from this into what we're seeing in Bellevue and Spokane? I doubt it'd be that big, but.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I like about Bellevue is it's, it's pretty to the point on their website. You can actually pick through different pieces of it and it's, it's relatively straightforward, but yeah, we would build it out from here. Um, not necessarily in more specifics as it relates to uh, requirements of what people need to submit. There might be a little bit of that, but I'm thinking more in terms of the schedule, the timeline, the selection process. You know, the, the advertising timeline until, you know, we do reviews and at what point those reviews occur. And who does those reviews and all that, all that stuff needs to be fleshed out. So that would be one of the next steps here, besides doing the refinements that were mentioned tonight. Um, to the guiding principles, these guiding principles kind of nest themselves within the RFP. Um, a chunk of RFPs tend to be pretty boilerplate as well and we'd probably start with, you know, one of the simpler ones we're able to find or one that we like.
So time of, like even now to development, to application to, you know, funds in hand. What would you just roughly estimate that to look like?
Well, it's gonna take a little bit of time to draft this up. Um, and then it's gonna take some time to put it out. And then it's gonna take some time to select, so I think, you know, if we, and we're gonna need probably one more touch with you all on the guiding principles. Just to make sure we're, we're solid. Um, so I've been thinking it's gonna take several months uh, to get through this process before we, we are selecting somebody. And then there's a contracting side of it as well, which means once we select somebody, we still have to do a contract with them and. Work through the details of that and that would come before council as well.
Yeah, we, we started collecting it three years ago. And yeah, it'd be very cool to see it in use, cause I know that at that time, which for some reason doesn't seem to be as much of a pressing issue in the community. And I'm sure it hasn't gone down, but um, it's still one of those things where it'd be nice to get that in and after. But I know back, back in twenty twenty-one, I think it, because we saw a lot more in the cities. That we just felt like, yeah, there's a huge giant homeless problem, it's right on our doorstep. So we wanted to get that out and right now it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily feel like that. I don't wanna be deceived by that though, and not get that money where it needs to be and see an escalation. So to me, it'd be, it would be important to, to see that actually getting in the hands as easily as possible that, that can use it.
Are there any questions you wish we'd be asking in this, or did you wish people would be asking you about your projects, whether it's just gonna help you shine or?
Uh, that's what we, so the projects, you're gonna be able to hear them do.
That's what we, so the projects you're going to be able to hear them do that after we do the RFP.
I'm not actually asking about their specific projects. I'm saying for the RFP, like what is that thing in the RFP you built up before you went, you know, I kind of wish they'd asked this because it helped me highlight what I'm doing.
I would always say in these kind of projects, it's great to show what is the management plan going to be? What is your history in doing something like this? You know, in the past and what is your relationship with partnering with other agencies and your success rates in doing projects like this?
That'd be good for us to know as well.
Yes, it's really great.
And then the adding the question of if you have funding from any other sources.
I like the county does, which is always interesting is I always feel like when I'm writing to them, I'm also teaching them something every time I'm writing to them. So there's things that you're unaware of in the housing market that you need to know about is that you can ask those kind of questions. What are some trends that you see coming and how will you solve that? You know, those are, those are good things to hear. And in that way, even if you say no to twenty people, you've gotten trends from twenty people. It's not a complete waste of their time because they're also educating the council, right?
And I always like starting with this is the problem it's going to solve. You know, and so that you guys can kind of look at like, because it'll feel overwhelming if it's multiple projects and say, okay, but what what's the problem where this funding is supposed to be solving? Right? So that's where my brain likes to start. It's like, this is what we're saying, the problem that we can help solve. And if you're like, well, that's not really a priority or, you know, we're going to focus or actually that is the priority. So having that them to define what they think the problem they're solving. I I just like to hear what they think, how they're going to be adding to this whole big picture of all these. This chart.
I like that and how many people you're planning on helping.
Yeah, and the cost per person on sometimes comes in there as well. And I would say a lot of times what helps us shine is like, how are you serving the individual, right? Because we're going to talk about some bigger numbers in contracts like this. But how is that individual? How are you going to guarantee if you're signing a fifty year contract with family promise or Helping Hands or the Y, that you know that the services that are needed are going to be provided?
But it's kind of touching on something I was concerned about with this is we don't necessarily want people to have be in a life situation where they just get stuck here and this is where they left forever.
Thirty percent AMI for the rest of your life. That's not the life you want to live.
Yeah, it's only through seventy five eighty, but if they're twenty, thirty days, we want to see that the organizations are going to have a plan to help get people moving forward and that this housing will be able to circulate new residents.
On that last, on that scene.
Was that some sort of wording that you would like to put into the RFP?
I think that was a bit too rambling for it, but yeah, somewhere.
How do you make our community thrive?
Yeah, how are you going to help the residents move upward and onward that are going to be in these programs?
So a couple of things, one to answer your first question. To understand in the RFP how you're going to score the answers, if you're going to score on that way, like where the weighting is. Having an understanding of that will help give, I think, the agencies an understanding of your priorities. I think that would be helpful. On the affordability and helping people move up the AMI scale, what I've seen successfully for in the in in ownership models, not not rental models, is that you can never indenture someone to stay in their house for fifteen years, right? But that there's an equity carrot to them. Not that they can go and sell for fair market value and pocket the difference, but that there is some equity that they can make to help build up their equity, build up their own wealth and hopefully pass that on to.
Very similar to what Habitat for Humanity is doing right now. So.
That's what was going to happen.
Yeah. And the CLT models also.
I like that. So that was getting back to your points. How do you help people? But this isn't an ownership model, not a rental.
I think that family promise sets up some examples of this first stage, second stage, third stage models. And the success rate that's shown by people moving in. And then what impressed me was actually helping them and once they're in a house, continuing with rent, continuing with checkups, continuing with counseling. And then, hey, we think you're doing great. You've been at this for six months. We found a house for you or, you know, here's this opportunity and we'll vouch for you to get you into your own rental. That's pretty amazing. And then you see that step up bottle going forward. So.
So what are they calling it? The family center, Anacortes Family Center, I believe is what it's called. They they actually, they actually do that. They help them. I think they pay rent every month and some of that is set aside for them. And so that when their time has finished, then when it's come to an end, they've got somebody that they can take and put it on.
And every program is going to be different. So in the RFP, I think what you're hearing is like, let's hear what what you the the group here is going to do with that funding and and the different flexibilities that we, you know, the problems that we're solving and and that's kind of having it like, let us share that narrative of how we all want, you know, how we think and I think you're going to find some exciting, different things that we can do and how we think about doing things and.
So I have I have written down here to actually consider for you to consider for the RFP is what I've heard our guests here share. So an equity model and the scoring, how is that going to be determined? Cost per person? How are you going to support or serve the individual or individuals? What are the trends you see coming and plans to solve them? Show other funding sources. What is the management plan? What is your success rate and what is your view on partnering partnering? I'll just give you a copy of the county.
Sounds like we just named it out. We just did that to ourselves.
Yeah, but those are all very typical questions. That will help. It's sometimes better too for the person. I appreciate some of those things because then when it's all said and done, if you get the funding, you know what you what you said you were going to do and you can go back to that. You it makes you, it pushes you to make the full plan. If a piece is missing, you have to go back to the drawing board and make that plan.
So to Rebecca's point, though, we all do something a little bit differently and and what we do and how we do it is a little bit different. So we may not look or report the exact same way that that you all do. So we just got to be, I think, mindful that if something doesn't align between the agencies, there may be a real reason why you don't in terms of the answers in the RFP.
Yeah.
We saw a pretty big push a while back for assistance for substance abuse and transients. And that was the homeless population that everybody kind of attracted to, to support and help. But as you can see here, we have families, children and guardians. We have youth getting out. We have seniors. So there's a larger swath to the homeless populace that we really wanted to tackle. Because what we saw in bigger cities with larger agencies with this was they're growing, the situation growing. And you'd have her success rate and it's either zero or we have more homeless people now than we had when we started. And that shouldn't be the model we're working with. So it is nice to see see that within this group helped develop this RFP. I don't, it doesn't sound like we'll be able to go into the presentations. My question, I guess, is with like the VOC or North Star, they were able to give presentations. Was that because they were just one off or they were able to come in without an RFP?
Yeah, BOA, it was they were coming before you requesting funding. And but the RFP, that was actually something that you all requested because you wanted to have the option to hear from different agencies and then make a determination decision as to what you think would be the best source to put your money into or to invest into. So that was the idea behind the RFP. And tonight, I think it's been very helpful hearing from our guests as far as what to look for and what we should be asking.
Will we give our guests the opportunity to ask questions?
Sure.
They might have some questions for us.
I guess the question I have for you is we have a packet of what the homes look like that favor construction builds and talks about cost and all of the floor plans. If I could hand those to you, so at least you could look through these at some point. That would be wonderful.
Would that be a part of your presentation that you would give Catherine?
Yeah, I mean, we can, but I this I know that you had specifically asked for like an actual, an actual handout of some sort. And that's the, that's what we brought is just to have a handout because it's requested.
We're okay with doing a presentation if there's still time for that. I'm not sure if there's still.
We had to do public comment and you guys just wanted to say what you guys wanted to do during public comment. You can use that there too, since we're not able to listen to you now.
It would be, it would be nice though, because I think Rebecca, you first reached out in May. And then Catherine, you first reached out in June. And to me, at least I don't know that I say council, but then I brought that to the council before the RFP was discussed. And it was, you know, and then we had the BOA here and they made a pretty, pretty large request that we had before us a few times. But I think that the idea of bringing that in was like, hey, we have these funds. Can we hear from these people to do this? I wasn't thinking that we would be doing an RFP process for.
Is there a problem with them just passing out? Well, I'm, I think the least we could do is look at your handouts and then it gives us a little bit of advance.
I didn't bring. Joe, you can send it.
I, well, I'm totally willing to come back anytime to a presentation that you guys need me to.
Love that too. I'd like to see the RFP done sooner than later and then that 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 helps our getting out.
We, when Charlie requested, we responded within twenty four hours. So we're here to serve our city and to help you guys in whatever process, even if it's not for us, because we want to see quality services in the city that we live in, right? So this is where I reside.
It was unanimous with the city. We have amazing talent here in this community to do outreach on beyond or beyond what we've seen through larger agencies and bigger cities. And a part of that's that relationship, that love and the trust that's been built and, you know, the success and the families that are impacted here. So it's awesome to have you guys even here at the table. It's a blessing that me for one, but I know the council is pretty unanimous in insisting, let's get them here so we can at least have these these heroes of our community help us as a city be be a hero to our city.
And I'd love to host you guys over at the center. I'm actually, Saturday, we'll be having an impact campaign forum at Century United Methodist for all of our donors and public that were also at our fundraiser. So anybody who wants to come to that, it'll be at eleven thirty at Century United Methodist this Saturday. So anybody who wants to hear some of it is also welcome there. I do have a couple of questions. Is is this just for the building of houses or is there acquisition for land available on here? Because we're kind of back and forth on our proposal for land right now. We could go in in twofold. We can either ask for lease the land or go for purchasing the land where we want to build the housing. So I just kind of was wondering.
Well, I thought the fifteen ninety, it did have restrictions on it.
Yes, for building houses, correct? Okay, that's what I thought. And I wanted to just double check on that to make sure I read.
I mean, I think it would be lovely if we could do that. I think that there's probably a lot of service groups that could use that. That's key is.
I'm working on that contract right now with with what I want to present to them. If we want to lease first so we can build right away and then go into ownership over time. So I just want to see how that falls. We do this application.
Yeah, I would just add if, you know, if you had another funding partner who was up for buying the land and some of this money could be used for the construction of housing units, that that could work.
Yeah. Yeah, we have several applications out there right now. So.
It would take a leap of faith because you, we don't have an RFP even developed. I know you guys have been reaching out for a number of months just to get at the table to start that and then it's going to be months later. So it's hard to get investors or partners to commit to leasing land without even you know, a guarantee from the city, from your citizens to support.
Luckily, we already have an MOU with the partner. It's just a matter of which direction am I going? It's been, and it's getting people at the table. So those were some of the things. I looked at some of the timelines you had in there from like the time of funding to you would like to see, it looks like twelve months, you'd like to see the project complete in twelve months of the time of funding. Is that correct?
No, we're just going off our guiding principles. Those RFPs that were in there were examples from other cities. So.
Okay, so you don't have any of that laid out. That would be nice to know. And the RFP is an expectation from the city. I've seen, I've seen a lot of numbers thrown around in there. So.
Can I ask you, what what do you think would be a good timeline?
As a builder, I can build starting tomorrow. My problem always is running through the necessary and very good hoops of planning and permitting. Yeah, but this is the world we live in.
That process has started, correct? Somewhat.
Well, in our particular case, I'm working with the city with Nicole to come up with some sort of I don't know, what would you call it? It's the cottage community type structure.
Guidelines.
So I'm helping with that on a total separate thing. And I don't know how quick that sort of model goes through, but the idea that we're trying to chase is increased density, rethinking what us, I mean, that'll help for everybody, rethinking what a starter home looks like is is we're not making more land. It's really hard to get land is like all our phone calls are, I'd love to buy your flat houses. Do you have land? 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 And if we can increase the density that creates more purchasable lots. And then there's a whole host of other opinions that I should hold. I won't get on my soapbox. So.
I think if we were asking a builder that was doing an apartment to like subsidize some of the apartments, you couldn't, they probably couldn't do it in a year with all the permits. So maybe it's like based on project at time of contract, there's an expectation.
Well, I think Community Action is working on a two phase apartment complex in Mount Vernon. Phase one is going to be twenty three months, I think.
Yeah.
Six units.
I spoke with Bill today, that's what he said.
I know, I do have a question. Are you considering bypassing the RFP process and looking at presentations? Because that would expedite, I think, on our end, which could expedite on your end as well.
That's kind of what I was alluding to. If we had to do an RFP for this bullet point four of that list, basically that you guys will follow through with the HD fifteen ninety rolling and allow yourselves available for audit by state or city, should that come. Simple statement like that. And that would accommodate the the Department of Commerce if that's involved, that would have accommodated in the RCW is involved. It's kind of like, okay, yeah, you're taking responsibility of that. But it sounded like with the volunteers of America, we were able to just allocate funding with the presentation if that was if that was your request. So do we need to do an RFP?
You requested the RFP.
Presented by Charlie, I believe, as an option.
And then you you agreed to it. You asked him to do that and he did it. He put it together. You don't have to do an RFP. You can, we can set up another time where they can come in and give their presentations. We can open it up to other agencies. But doing, but but if we, but you don't want to put the cart before the horse. If you're going to do an RFP, then you want to take care of that now. You want to do a second touch to make sure that you've actually got everything in it that you want. Personally, I think it's a really good guideline to go by. I think I think it is. And I think it's fair then that it opens it up to other agencies to come in. But that's, you know, your call. But but we we don't want to put the cart before the horse.
Charlie, when we first talked about bringing in, like I I mentioned, hey, we met with or I met with Helping Hands. They had a really good idea. It sounded like something that could be very vibrant, procedural, wooly. And then you you kind of brought forth the RFP process. I don't know that it was explained that we could really just go and have them come in and allocate those funds like like the volunteers of America came in or North Star comes in. And that would have been, I think, my preference at the time, I think, knowing that, that we just get a personal. And then if it becomes such a big, so many applicants are coming in to say, hey, can we get, then it's like, hey, let's get an RFP.
Do you understand you still are going to have to abide by certain rules and regulations based upon what the RCWs are? And I think that's where having an RFP is very, very helpful. You would be, you would be the only organizer, everybody is, you can talk to them. When they get funding, they have to go through this process and.
Maybe we wait on the RFP till twenty twenty five here, there's the rest of this year. And then if we can utilize funding, we we have, just like for volunteers of America's request, hear their request and then and then twenty twenty five Charlie's working on that RFP.
America already had a project in process and they already had the majority of the funding. They were just looking for the final funding, which is what they were requesting from all of you. Well, it was, it's a little different situation. It wasn't a project that hasn't.
North Star wasn't a finished project. It was kind of like, give us the money and let's see what we can do with it. No, North Star, no, North Star had, they had projects that they, that that money was going to go to. It was already in place. They already knew what they needed. To work on these projects, either phase one, phase two, or to complete them. They already had that.
Uh, do, do we have any, uh, exposure if we don't do an RFP in terms of somebody saying, I didn't hear about this? Why wasn't I notified? Why wasn't I given public notice? Is there any exposure on that?
I would say no, because, um, as long as you are following the guidelines within the statute. When you are utilizing that money, then you are utilizing it appropriately. I think, uh, from my perspective, the benefit to having an, an RFP is so that everybody gets a chance. To operate on the same playing field with an understanding of these are the objective criteria that we are looking for. And this is, um, what you need to do in order to receive these funds. And again, um. From my perspective, hearing what their management plan is and how they intend to create a program. That, um, meets the requirements of fifteen ninety long term is what I think that you would want to see before you've signed off on a project.
So in theory, if you were to come back, which it sounds like you already got one, presentation built off of past RFPs you've already done for KNSA. And you built it along those same guidelines, we'd be in accordance to the RFP we would develop. Except we would, like you said, kind of skip that process at least for now, and we wouldn't have to go through the long process. I doubt anybody, maybe they would, but bringing something that says, hey, I just want some money for some houses, thinking it'll work out. Versus here's a presentation, here are two bullet points we, we go through, we talked about. And, uh, you know, almost doing an RFP without actually having an official RFP, the RFP would be in their presentation.
I assume there would still be a contract.
Sure. Yeah, you gotta adhere to the HB fifteen ninety ruling and allow yourselves to be.
I go either way. I can give you the same presentation I would give you in an RFP in any speech I do. I mean, I do presentations like that all the time.
I think the difference is the RFP is going to be like you heard Charlie months out before we can even hear it. And then from there, you saw how long it took to get you in right now, which it was a big, big process. And then even after that, making the, everything in government works very slow. And we've had funds for three years. We've spent, you know, a fraction of them.
Yeah, we have had this plan in place for, uh, about three years and finalized. We will be launching. Uh, we just did our soft launch of our campaign at our fundraiser this last weekend. And we will be formally launching all three phases, uh, at the beginning of twenty twenty-five, which goes beyond what our request is tonight. So. Uh, yeah, I would say we have a good plan mapped out and SEDR WOILY could tie to all three phases, just, well, two of the phases.
How, how, how soon could all of you make a presentation?
I came prepared tonight, so. I didn't know what tonight was going to be. And based on the meeting we were at last week or the week before, I was like, oh, I better be prepared.
We could get, we could get them back in front of you by the end of this month. Why don't we just do the?
And I, and so in all fairness, the budget process, I mean, I know you're all excited about this. We have business we have to take care of. So with the budget.
Yeah, there's, there's several things, um, you know, slated from my perspective, you know. Three months is not a long time, um, just from my, just from my perspective. And, um, as a former state auditor, I, I think more formalized. Processes that outline things in contracts, um. Is. A lesser chance of receiving an audit finding or review of these types of funds. And honestly, they have that, you know, we've had them for a couple of years, but from a state perspective, that's not very long. So it's likely that this could come up in the future for. For audit or the Department of Commerce coming in, um, in auditing. So I do recommend going through a little bit of formal process. And that, that doesn't, that next couple of months, you know, I don't think it's going to make or break for these. Organizations who do a great job or, uh. For our community and we want to make sure we are spending the money. Exactly how the council wants us.
The only concern I'd have about that is winter or like hotel vouchers, right? Like for those that, if there is some funding that you guys want to get out for getting people off the street in the winter time. Uh, which family promise does really well. Um, but that's not brick and mortar, right? That's just more of a request. Let's get people off the street and for the winter time.
Time, we can do this, but there are people and kids who might think otherwise. And I think that, um, if we all do our job efficiently and use our time wisely, we can, we can make a go out of it.
Kelly, well, how, when are you out of the budget wars, so to speak?
We have several press, we have several things, um, through November. Including, um, you know. At our next, next council meeting, we have utility rates to talk about, um, the property tax ordinance. Final budget approval, um. The ordinances for the utility taxes and master fee schedule. All those things, um, are set on the council agenda through about November.
And how, how, when would it all, for these folks to come back?
Well, I mean, it, it's not really for me to say because multiple items can be on council agendas.
Might fit one, one session until for the next couple of weeks?
That's kind of where I was going with this. I was going to say, how long do you need? The ten minutes, half hour, eighteen hours?
How much information do you want from us? I can fill an hour. Uh, I would say a good solid presentation with all the questions we just talked about from an art for. If you want all the RFP questions, would be a good fifteen minutes. I would say if twenty minutes. I mean, some of that stuff we could give to you in a handout. It's what I would say. You pick a timeline and how much documentation you want. I can give you all those service kind of things. In a document that I just pulled straight out of another grant similar to this. And then give you the live presentation on what is our capital gap.
I think one at a time is a great idea because we, we have a lot of stuff on our agendas and just have them coming one at a time. I don't know how, some of you can do it immediately. Some of you might need more time, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, the, for, for us, it would be maybe ten, fifteen minutes. And then I would think you'd probably want ten minutes for Q and A.
So thirty minutes, that's, that's.
I could rattle off now.
We all live and breathe this stuff, right? That's what we do. That, that's our jobs to be prepared like that, but.
I think it's really important that the solutions to these local problems come from local folks. Uh, so I really appreciate all of you being here to tackle what, what is not an easy problem, which is. I mean, look at Seattle, what have they spent a billion dollars on homelessness? So. It's a tough problem and I appreciate y'all's dedication to it.
The other thing is, is we all know how to write an RFP. So if you're talking about, you want to hear something right away, an RFP right away. But it's the fact that maybe the council doesn't have the ability to put that, that, that is the strenuous process. I think we all have the means to just give you the information you need and then you can choose.
I'm okay with that.
Then it means, it means your guys' legal requirements as well, because it is good to have documentation that backs things.
I want to know what effect changing the comp plan might have on us.
Yeah, we, we won't have, well, there's two things that are happening. There's the comp plan amendment. Or excuse me, the comp plan update process, which we don't anticipate to have a, a draft of that done until about March of next year. Um, and then also planning commission right now is looking at some, um, possible code changes. Uh, coming up at definitions for cottage housing and that sort of thing. So there's those two things that are happening. Planning Commission did have a presentation of that information at the last meeting. They took no action. They had a couple more questions and it'll come back at their meeting in October or this month. And we don't know the outcomes of that yet till we have that meeting. And then it goes to council.
My point is, it's kind of tough when you change the rules in the middle of the project.
Our project is already permitted, permissible, so we could do it today. Because, because ours is ADUs and it's already.
We don't know if that's going to change or not, it's going to change. And, and what I'm getting at mostly there are the design requirements. Because we heard from five commissions, they'd like to see, um, cottage housing, uh, fit into the neighborhoods. Keeping consistent with the neighborhoods and, and that sort of thing. So we're still working through all of that and what that means.
Tom, is cottage housing, it doesn't include ADUs or is this a different?
ADUs itself, right? Yeah, uh, but we are also updating that, um, ordinance and code amendments too as a result of some, uh. Uh, findings with the state that we discovered. So that'll be coming to council here soon too. So we have a lot of moving parts. Also wanted to ask if, um. Is, thinking about Kelly's points and some of the other points that I heard, um, is this, um. What, do the purchasing policies have something to say on this? Are we required to issue our, our PRFQ?
This is a grant that the city is, um, providing.
Okay.
And so.
And the other question I had is, I, I'm still new. I don't know all the players yet, so I don't mean to be offensive, but are there other players, uh, providers of the services that aren't here?
Prestige WOILY?
I mean, they might work in SEDR WOILY, but like they might have clients here in SEDR WOILY, but I think we're the, we're people that here.
I'm like a couple of blocks down the road of my town, you know, but we serve all Scotts County.
Habitats, they may be.
Okay, because I was thinking with the RFP process, I don't. That sends out a public notice to folks, anybody has an interest who does services here to come and present. So otherwise it looks like we're select.
So Habitat, answer your question, is, is in this service. But they're dependent on owning the land in, in the city. Uh, I worked with them six months ago and they didn't have land in SEDR WOILY.
Them and everybody that does provide this stuff. And I think that's what the, I think that's the framework that the RFP provides, right?
Yeah, that puts right back to the, the RFP that was said to be optional, that, that we required when we first talked about getting these people before us. So it's kind of like, even today's meeting would have been beneficial if we didn't necessarily have the confusion with the RFP and actually heard the presentations. Or even heard it before, because two hours, um, we probably could have gone through and made some, some better decisions on that and then moved right along. So I don't think it's required, uh, Thomas, but I think it's, you know, there's benefits to it. And so we want to pursue that route, I think, as we go forward in twenty twenty-five. Um, but for right now, the idea was, there's people that have reached out in, with requests. And we couldn't get them before the council to make the same presentations that. You know, I know Volunteers of America was in process, but they came in to make a presentation. And some of these guys have been in process as well, or they're looking at things. So we didn't give them the same opportunities.
Since the timing and calendar, um. I mean, if we are issued this RFP pretty quickly and you give it a thirty day turnaround. We'd get responses about the time of wrapping up with the budget questions, right? So timing might be right if we suit that.
I think Charlie said it'd take a couple of months to get out the RFP and then that, that turnaround and then the presentation process of those response.
Yeah, I think it really comes down to how involved the council wants to be. I'm hearing a lot of involvement desire from the council. And so if you want to be into kind of wordsmithing the RFP as we put it out, having pre-application meetings with. The applicants and things like that, it's going to take longer. So I was factoring that into my estimate. Um, if we take a lot of that stuff out, we can get it out a lot quicker. Still take a few weeks, but a lot quicker.
Thirty days is?
I'm going to, uh, full disclosure, taking a vacation here shortly, um, for about ten days, but you know, that aside. Um, I'm going to be hiking, so I can't work on it while I'm on vacation, unfortunately. Um, but that aside, you know, a few weeks, um, November one.
If things were ready by January first, so this is something that the council could actually jump into, January first, is that a possibility? That's a couple of months away. January first, is that possible, Charlie?
Are we talking about the resolution of the RFP or putting it out?
Um, well, having the RFP determined and then starting to receive and hear applicants January first. For in January, our first meeting, starting with the first meeting in January.
You know, I go back and forth. I'm, I'm okay with just doing the presentations. Uh, but the RFP has the appearance of process. And as a former journalist. Who covered a lot of questionable things in government in the South, where a lot of sweetheart deals went on every day. Uh, you don't, you want to avoid the appearance of that. So just throwing that out.
Well, it seems like we got the guiding principles pretty much ironed out. And an RFP is as simple as we put a notice out that we are looking to spend these fifteen ninety funds within these guiding principles. I do R, RFPs every day at work. It takes ten seconds to, to put that out and say, hey. We need a new HVAC system and we get bids the next day. It, it's just that fast. So what, what we've been hammering on this entire meeting is the guiding principles. Of what we are looking for as the. The framework for what these projects, what we want to see, what we don't want to see, kind of. And we're looking to hear your guys' ideas. Because we don't, we are not, as a government agency, we're not in the business of providing housing. They made us essentially with the House Bill fifteen ninety, we have to collect these funds and we have to spend them. We're not the, we're not the builders. We're not the service providers. And we're not the YMCA and we're not the food bank. So that's kind of why we've really been wanting to hear your guys' proposals and your guys' ideas. And essentially your bids.
Take out for suggestion, could we somehow streamline our P process so it goes up more quickly? If you wanted to, you know, do the pre-meeting, whatever, we could do that with a council committee. Right? A couple of council members who wouldn't have to have the whole committee that was staff. And then you could move it forward quickly. We, it looks like we already have the principles. Just do the RFP, throw it out there. And, you know, the timeline around the end of the year, we are, you know, we, we're meeting with people, we're getting, the process is moving forward.
Why couldn't we do both at the same time? We already know that these three organizations are, it sounds like you're planning on applying. And you've heard what we're wanting, so.
Wait until January is not going to hurt us. I'll tell you that much. We're going to continue forward with our plans. We're still going to launch and we're going to continue moving forward. If you guys need help with RFP help, I can put together an RFP that we typically do for county or state or local or whatever. Based on all this, send it over to you guys. Then at your next meeting, you guys have a framework to go off of. And Charlie can take his vacation. I can take my vacation.
And while that's cooking, we can get our ADU, I mean, our cottage.
Because in the middle of all this, that's the only thing that's really holding us back is actually the city.
We've been, there's been impatience that the process is moving forward, just as long as we're certain the process is moving forward. And I, I do, uh, take into mind the, you know, the workload on staff, especially with budget. It's, it's not easy. They, they need, need to do a lot of work on that.
This is the hard season. This is our nonprofit fundraising season. So, um, it's, yeah, January is great. It's a dead season almost somewhat. Service is hard, but there's not as much funding.
You're, you're raising money right now.
Yeah. I'm in a marathon right now.
It's just about timing, availability of funds. The longer it takes for the funds to become available, we, we just can't hit the start button. Have you, because we're, we're not in a position to, to front the costs without either a bridge loan or other creative financing. And that is actually not something we like to do anymore, so.
What I was meaning with saying that is that maybe as the schedule allows, we can start getting them in for presentations. If we know they're going to apply anyway, the RFP goes out at some point in that timeframe. And then if anyone else applies for it, we then hear from them as well. Have formal applications.
City member did something similar. I, I don't know exactly how that works, but they will have, I've not gone in for it. But they will have people come in and do presentations, uh, to their council, right?
For fifteen, uh, they did.
Not for fifteen ninety, but for.
Maybe for other things. We've done free apps for development.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, before, before we issued permits and that kind of stuff, or request permits. For this, that they had a pretty extensive process built. And I think once they received all the requests, they threw it aside. And I think once they received all the requests, they threw it aside. Like they were going to have a special committee. They were going to do pre-meet, pre-app meetings for it. And they put a lot of it aside and, and actually took out a third party committee and, and the council decided themselves.
Sounds like they were for their own.
But they had a full RFP application, multi-pages.
I think the cottage thing also adds another wrinkle too, so we have to be careful.
We do, and I think for a good reason, because there is nothing like trying, trying to change up horses in the middle of it. I don't think that that is fair.
But it sounds like January sounds very doable to make sure that we have the presentations all in or scheduled and the RFP's done and then we can make a decision in early January.
Does that include the services piece? And not the forty percent?
Oh, is that a separate thing?
I would imagine that you guys would want some of those.
The way it's written right now, it's billed for either, either services or bricks and mortar because you could spend a hundred percent of that money on bricks and mortar if you wanted to and not do services. Obviously, there's been some discussion about that tonight. Council, you could split it out, but it'd probably be helpful to have a conversation about, at some point about whether you want to take the full forty percent or do some lesser amount.
I think the idea, Charlie, was do they need an RFP in order to come in and petition the council for service costs, for service funds? And so let's say in, and you know, outside of this conversation, you guys come in with a different presentation and say, hey, I really could use, you know, thirty grand, fifty grand for some rental vouchers, these things. Does it have to go through the RFP? Or can we do that now and then set up the, the brick and mortar and service side going into January if that's what you want?
Uh, as long as you're clear with it, uh, all of those are options.
If I could, Mount Vernon's president, their RFP was for both. It didn't, they didn't have a separate RFP for us.
Yeah, I would do that. I think it's. No, I, I, yeah, this one's set up that way, but before it's out in January, they would have an opportunity to come in and, and petition NBC funds before January. So they wouldn't bring in a presentation about brick and mortar or what they're going to do for all these things. It would be a shortened presentation just to see.
Presentation or request for funds.
That's fine.
For immediate services is what it would be completely separate from the RFP and it would expedite the availability of funds being provided to them to help the community currently now in need looking for to stay in their homes during times of need when things are getting, when everybody's getting.
It's going to be a harsh winter and I, I don't even want to think about it.
Just a question for council, would you want us? Question for council, would you want to set forty percent of the fifteen ninety funds aside for that potentially? Because when we put the RFP out for bricks and mortar at least, or if it's for both, I think we do want to be clear on how much money is actually available because the respondents are going to scale their projects based upon what is available.
Forty percent is three hundred and five.
For services. We, we would prefer rental or eviction prevention. And that's going to be the service section, right? Job training or rental assistance, all that stuff.
Drug and alcohol.
Delivery, admin costs, all that. So that would be important and that would eliminate a lot of that.
Yeah, that's a benefit to the RFP is that you can say, you can say that to the community. I don't want, we want to spend it on, you know, what, what you just said, if that's the, if that's the concept.
It's transparency.
I don't think they would come in for full request on the entirety of the forty percent. Like there's three hundred and five left where you can each come in for a hundred grand. So when the RFP gets developed and out for January, it would be, it would be still along those lines.
Yeah, but you know, to, to some of our presenters or guests, comments, like if there's something that the council doesn't want or, you know, you're going to narrow the focus of what you want to spend forty percent on. It, it's a, that, that's a cap, right? So you could say you want to spend twenty percent. Decide that way, but then it's very clear what the focus is if you have a specific.
So it's not like forty percent for admin cost alone or forty percent just for rental. It's, we could say, oh, this much for this or this.
Or, you know, Charlie says you want to have, it, it's nice to know the dollar amount, but council could also decide, you know, forty, forty percent is the, i- is the, the maximum. So you don't have to say we're going to spend, or we're going to expend forty percent. You could dial it back to a different percentage. Right? Or if you have another goal, you know, you want to spend more on the bricks and mortar, you want to spend seventy percent. That, that's the overall goal. You could put that out there as well.
Don't know if the brick and mortar will prevent homelessness. It, it will more assist if it's already there or give, it can give people who have, are looking at getting to be homeless into an ADU or cottage or something like that. But the full forty percent seems like it would prevent this.
That's just an example, like however council wanted to structure that funding. It doesn't have to be exactly that, how that, how the state put it out to sixty, forty, if you're going.
So is that something you guys would all be interested in? Do you need a presentation for petitioning for just the service fund side?
And I mean, I have dollar amounts for eviction prevention, but there's also things happening during the wintertime like seasonal shelters. So you might consider that if you're trying to. Yeah, we have, we're short funding for seasonal shelter and operations of our shelter in a higher capacity during these seasons, but I definitely have a dollar figure for eviction prevention that could be used easily in the next year. But it wouldn't reach that forty percent. So you could definitely get multiple agencies.
Or else we, we would spend the time to write the whole thing for both capital and service. And if council, they wanted to talk about the service component, we could structure that way.
Is it, is there a greater need for homeless youth during this time of year into the holidays?
It's the same, same situation that we're, that was, according to, it's cold out. Because a lot of the outreach, we've got a street team, you know, we're looking for the kids. We generally know where they are, but as it gets colder and colder, it becomes harder and harder to locate them. So, and what we try to do is get them into the rec center to give them some services or find some emergency shelter if it's available, ultimately leading to either, you know, family vacation or other long-term care.
There are probably a lot of couch surfing, like fourteen year old granddaughters that are going right now.
Right. I mean, you guys probably see the school districts, McKenney, Benton, that, right? And I think it sits three, four percent of the, just the enrolled students in the U C drop.
Even the hospitals putting people, unfortunately, not due to their own, like, but they put them straight on the street. There was a couple seniors last year that got put out on the street in this time of the year. And, and they actually qualify for diversion funding depending on how long they've been there. But because they've come out of an institution, so they actually qualify for some of those funding that we get, which is nice. Don't get me to call them and say, go, go check into the hospital.
Yeah, there would be about sixteen hundred almost children amongst the school age and non-school age in our county. And this is the time of season where it will start skyrocketing. Unfortunately, it starts as soon as it starts raining, right? But we're supposed to have a cold winter that may extend longer than our typical seasonal contracts do as well. So that also puts, I mean, it's always a hard thing at the end of the season when it's still cold outside. Okay, our contract's over now. We put them back on the streets. A lot of times we need extra funding for direct client services so we can push them into new units and units cost a lot more than they used to.
So the Department of Commerce in their definitions lists homelessness as without a physical structure or for a very limited time. Is that sixteen hundred under the definition of homelessness per the Department of Commerce?
I use McKinney-Vento, which is basically they have no stable structure. They don't have a.
That's what the schools, they have each school, they have the Kenny Vento, counselor coordinator, support system.
Yeah, they can be living at grandparents', they could be living in car, relatives'.
But it's not a stable.
Well, I think the car would be a definition of homelessness according to the Department of.
And a lot of times for children, what happens is they end up, they are the invisibly homeless. They end up in different places, just as you were saying. And then they end up in bad situations that lead to a lifetime of chronic issues, right? And so that's where our program comes in. We're trying to serve, we're serving youth. Any program trying to serve youth is trying to stop the chronic issues that we see in our. Yeah, and we do that by serving the families. Our overall goal is the children, right?
If we were to go by the definition of the Department of Commerce, how many homeless youth would be in Scotts County? Which is without brick and mortar or a very limited time in a shelter.
Well, school age, it's reported at eight hundred and one.
Better on the street without a home in any way.
Again, it's just McKenney Vento.
The Department of Commerce definition.
It's a lot lower. Lisa Janiky presented this to us not too long ago and I think it was six hundred or something, or four hundred. Her definition was much lower than what we considered ours to be.
Two potential resources for you. One is Northwest Youth Services has a rating list that they developed and they've identified a hundred and fifty kids. Then the, I don't know what you could get from the public health department that, you know, they have coordinated entry and they're tracking. Now, most of that's not going to be used. But there might be a foxy or some other information that they might be.
Team it up in houses and, you know.
And are these that are not hooked up to services or considered unhoused?
Yeah, that's considered, well, but yeah, I've seen where, where people are roomating up or you get multifamily in a home and, and that's considered homelessness, even though it's just crowded. They, they're, you know, it's not ideal, but it is kind of crowded. I know that when I was, I was probably fourteen when I started out on the streets and then fifteen, sixteen, bouncing, couch surfing, lived in tents for a little bit, you know, that was homeless. But living couch surfing or living with buddies and friends for periods of time, I really would consider that homeless myself. So there is the, and it is hard to get services when you're in that situation. But it is, you know, one of those things where if we, if we follow a standard definition, and I, I hadn't heard that other one, it makes it easier to understand what the actual, where the, where the actual problem is, is you guys know limited funds. Where can we put those resources to immediate help with people that actually do not have.
It's part of what Family Promise does across the nation is trying to get that homelessness definition changed to the McKinney-Vento because we see children that are living in closets and they're considered housed. They don't have adequate food. They're living in drug addicted places. It's not a good, not a good deal. But they're not considered homeless.
I have a quick question. Do services continue for fostering when they age out or are they kind of on their own?
I think there's a real deal for transitional housing. It's something we've identified in our agency, but it's not something we're able to provide.
The, the reason I bring it up is I was shocked. I worked for many years at Western Washington University and I can't bring it up too often. But there's three to four hundred kids that stay in the dorms over Christmas holidays. I was shocked by that. I said, why? Foster kids, basically homeless kids that ended up in our dorms, but qualified to go to college. And a lot of them were simply kids that were not welcome at their, back at their homes. And it's sad. Or, or didn't want to go back.
The college is reporting twenty students living in the parking lot right now.
So Mayor, or for a presentation for service funds, if they were to do that, could we accommodate that section? Well, and that would be something that seems like a path forward and then move towards the RFP. I think that's the compromise, a streamlined RFP.
I think this is excellent conversation tonight. What we learned and gleaned from all of you. I, I know I've met with all of you. I've been in several presentations, whatnot, and I still learn things tonight. It's such a complicated process that we have. And greatly admire your, your dedication to this. Yeah. So thank you very much for coming in tonight. Greatly appreciate it. And if the council is ready, well, just move on to next item on the agenda and that is simply public comment. I don't know. Do you want to give public comment? Is there anybody in line that would like to give public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing that, excuse me. I'll close public comment and with that, thank you very much. Thank you for the direction that you've given us, council. That's good. That's very helpful. And so if I heard you correctly, let me just wrap this up. So I heard you correctly. So if they want to come in for direct public services right now, that's a good thing. That's, that's okay by all of you. We're going to move forward with the RFP and what we're hoping is that by January, first of January, we can start with those presentations and hearing people out. Is that, is that what you want?
Correct. So if we backed it out and they had thirty days to submit their application, then the RFP would be up and available by December first and then submitted. I would think the deadline would be the first Monday of January after the holidays. You're talking about business days and then that would allow us to then move forward and start bidding now. And how do you want us to do the service? Just come into the next council meeting and do like open comment or? I think a presentation, I think you should be on the presentation.
Should be on the agenda.
And then you'll shoot over an RFP so we can.
Yes, who, who, who wants that? Charlie, did you want that?
Do you have the Mount Vernon one? Because I can get you that one.
Send it by pigeon because he might be up in the woods.
I'll send it to Kelly too.
Have I missed anything?
It was a great conversation, guys.